Today, we are joined by Mr. Terry Burris. Terry Burris is currently running for city council District Two.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to introduce him. We're gonna sit down and get to know him a little bit better. So, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yes, uh, like Ryan said, my name's Terry Burris, running for District Two City Council. Lived in Taylor about twenty years, married a Taylor girl, we have a house in, uh, heart of Taylor down by Murphy Park. Got real interested in the politics, uh, when I lived in Georgia, I'm from Georgetown. When I lived there, I was interested in politics and, uh, it's interesting here in Taylor. And, uh, I'd swore I would never run for an office, but over the year, over the last few years, my, uh, my life has changed and specifically when, when we recently did a petition drive to roll back the raise that the council had given them themselves, the people we talked to just had some compelling stories. And over and over again, the main theme of their problem is that the city doesn't listen to them. So, I have a strong background in manufacturing leadership. I currently work for the federal government with FEMA where each day I work with cities and states and counties on the same type of issues that we deal with daily. So, those experiences, I think, would help me with the, you know, as a council member.
Got it, alright. So, you kind of already touched on it a little bit, but you're from Georgetown?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what did, did you go to college or anything like that?
I went to college, uh, started at A C. First, I went to the Army.
Got it.
Because, uh, I didn't think I was ready for college. So, the Army got me ready for life. So, I spent three years active duty, then got out, had a choice of going to work for Bell Heli- I worked on helicopters, you know, active duty. Was gonna go to work for Bell Helicopter or IBM. The Iranian hostage situation started with Bell helicopter employees and I said, "That's probably not the best move for me." So, I went to work at IBM.
Got it.
Spent seventeen, uh, fourteen years at IBM and they were going to subcontract their manufacturing overseas. So, so I took early retirement. Then I began working for smaller companies, contract manufacturers that support the semiconductor industry. And, uh, they built, uh, in those companies, we built parts of the semiconductor processing, those type of things. I have a fairly well, you know, I was in that between IBM and those jobs, it was over twenty years. So, I have a fairly well, a good understanding of the semiconductor electronics industry. The type of companies that are gonna wanna come to the Taylor area.
Right.
To support. Uh, I actually, in one of my assignments, I was the general manager for a company called FM Industries and they were based out of California. And Applied Materials needed them to have a presence in Texas. So, they hired me to put a facility in in Flugerville. So, I got to deal with all the permits and the zoning and the neighborhood associations.
Okay.
All of those type of things. So, I have some background in that, which will help going forward. I know we have departments and personnel for that, but to have an understanding of those type of things has gotta be good.
Right.
But, uh-
And currently, I think I saw online, you're a professor?
I was a professor for seven years, uh, working at FEMA. I started with FEMA when Hurricane Harvey hit. And I worked on FEMA for five years and the amount of work we had in that was, uh, was quite a bit. So, I didn't accept any more teaching assignments. And I taught at Concordia. I taught in the School of Business, uh, mostly leadership and management courses.
Got it, okay.
My, uh, I got, I ended up getting an MBA at Concordia.
Nice.
So, I have that with an emphasis in organizational leadership. I did all of my doctoral coursework at North Central University. And I'm a doctoral candidate. I haven't written a dissertation yet. So, and I'm not sure I will because I mainly wanted the courses at that level. And those courses and are, you know, gave me a pretty good understanding of the types of issues that the city faces from a leadership standpoint. And you're gonna get to asking me about that later, but, uh, it'll all tie in.
Got it. Well, you already kinda touched on what compelled you to run for city council. But I guess you also feel like your background, especially in semiconductor industries, working with the city, you think that's gonna help you out too on the city council?
Very much because, you know, it's one thing to have Samsung. It's a done deal. I have people tell me, oh, you know, down with Samsung, Samsung's here. So, make the best of it. That's what we need to do. You know, the, the large abatements that they received and all that type of thing. You know, they're here now. It's water under the bridge, but we've gotta manage that. And all of the suppliers that it takes to Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three suppliers that it takes to support a facility like Samsung.
Right.
Those jobs and, uh, tax revenue will go a long way to helping the city get to where it wants to be in far as infrastructure and those type of things.
Awesome.
So-
I had no idea that that was your background.
Yeah.
That's cool to learn about.
The, uh, the background that I think is gonna help the most is my current job as a program delivery manager, uh, for FEMA. I, every day, I'm on the phone or visiting a city or a county or that type of thing. I get to see the different governments out there within, you know, in the Texas area. I'm currently managing all the fires, the, the large grass fires and things for five states. So, I get to work with a, a wide range of, uh, different communities. So-
Got it, okay.
It's a pretty rewarding job.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Cause they'll apply for grants and my job is to help them, get them back to where they were before the fire and, uh, the money. And, you know, we're, we wanna help them get back, but we also wanna ensure that the taxpayers' money is being used correctly. So, that's what I do.
Awesome, awesome. So-
And I plan to do that into the city also.
Well, that's one of my questions is what changes or what is your focus going to be if you're elected to city council?
Well, if you look on, on, uh, social media right now, there's a whole lot of talk about bike lanes and street improvements on Mallard and all different things. And actually, those are just symptoms of a bigger problem. So, somebody said years ago, when I was going through school, and I don't remember, I'm sorry, I can't attribute it to a person, but an organization is a direct reflection of their leadership. So, if we look right now, Taylor, Taylor is the organization. It's split. There's a big divide. There's, uh, people going at it at each other on social media. You go to the city council meetings and there's jabs being thrown by sitting council people. And, you know, this one's making a comment about that one. And there, there's nothing really bad, but it's just the little dings, you know, and, and I believe that for us, with the amount of issues that we have facing us with the growth, uh, the infrastructure, all of that type of thing, we don't have enough time to waste being so divided. So, the top priority for anybody running for office on the city council is to be to get rid of the division. Try to, try to develop a cohesive team. Now, that doesn't mean that it's gonna, all votes will be five oh, you know, that's, everybody has different opinions, but you ought to be able to work together as a team. A good team has a diverse group of personnel on it with different backgrounds and those type of things to give different opinions. And they're not always gonna agree, but when they disagree, they ought to be able to do it in a mature way. Instead of, you know, with as much as we have to do, there's no room for wasting any time with that other rhetoric. So, I think that's, a number one issue for any candidate would be to try to build a cohesive team and to end the division in Taylor, make it more unanimous. The, uh, the folks we spoke to on, uh, our petition drive, thirteen hundred or more and to a person, every one of them said, "We don't feel the city listens to us. We don't feel our voices are being heard. Uh, we're tired of the fighting. We're tired of, uh, the city councilmen going at each other." So, those kind of discussions are what made me wanna run and are gonna be top priorities for me.
Got it.
Now, if you look at Mallard and I came out last week with my opinions on Mallard. Mallard, if you talked to everybody in town, they wouldn't have voted for that. That came out of a envision Taylor, uh, consultants, um-
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan and then the street maintenance plan and then there's another plan. And it's, it gets kinda confusing if you don't follow the paper trail.
Right.
But, uh, if people are truly against it, and I said this last week, if you're truly against that type of activity, that, you know, and there's some of us that think that's a waste of money to put in those type of things on a street when it's not needed. Now, later on, when everybody's on a bicycle and we're, you know, there's a need for it and hopefully we'll have the revenue to do things like that. But I think if you interviewed the people in Taylor, they wouldn't have been for that.
So, you don't think it would be necessarily a bad idea, it's just not at the right time?
No, I think bike lanes have a function. I don't like the configuration they're in because I'm, I was a cyclist for twelve years and I, I did the MS one fifty eight times and stuff. And I understand from a bike, bicycle, bicycle person's point of view that it's not good. You know, it's, it's a, especially coming from Houston to Austin, it was a, it was kind of a scary thing. And there's a need for them, but if you look in Austin, and I'm not usually one to put, to say good things about Austin, real, uh, being an Aggie fan and all, but, uh, Austin, when they do put bike lanes in, they put smaller lanes in each side, go in the direction of traffic, which everybody that rides a bike is always taught to. The whole scenario we put out on Mallard is just, it goes against what we're taught as cyclists. So, I think, I think there could have been a better decision-making. But what I wanted to get at is I posted that last week. Yesterday, Councilman Ariola came out saying the same thing. So, there's agreement there and he's asking, you know, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but it's, he's asking for that to be looked at closer. Maybe put future ones that, you know, they're ready to start on Fourth Street right now.
Right, I saw that.
So, if, I'm not saying, "Don't fix Fourth Street, don't fix any of the other streets." Cause believe me, every street could use a little tender loving care in Taylor.
Right, as a Realtor who brings people in, that's one of their first comments.
Yeah, it's, it's embarrassing. Uh, I have a four-wheel-drive F-150 and I need, I need it driving around Taylor. And I've gotten to see probably every street in Taylor in putting signs out and talking to people. And, uh, we need it. But my thing is, we need, there's so much work to be done. We don't need to be wasting any money on what we do. Mallard had a few bumps here and there, but for the most part, it was still a pretty decent street. It wasn't, it shouldn't have been on anybody's priority list in Taylor to get fixed. We could've spent money on Seventh. We could've been, you know, there's just tons of streets, especially those around the Country Club.
Right.
In those neighborhoods, over in Gerald Anderson's area, you know, on the east side over there. There's a lot of places that road money could've been used. Instead of making, uh, Mallard a fancy, fancy street, you know. I just, I just, uh, I just think we need to be responsible, have fiduciary responsibility, you know. Until, until we're making more money than we can spend off of the companies moving in and the Samsung, uh, we ought to be real careful how we spend it and try to get, try to create a community that's really great for our citizens.
Just speaking of the future of Taylor, where do you see the growth of Taylor going? Or if you were on city council, where would you try to push the growth of Taylor? Not in any certain area, but just overall?
So, there is growth trying to happen towards the Samsung area. There's property owners in the ETJ that would like to sell to companies that are wanting to build and create more tax revenue for the city. But their hands are tied and they can't get, they can't sell their property because there's limited use on it. I think, I think we've made big mistakes in, uh, with our limited use policies. We've brought in a, we brought in probably one of the larger corporations in the world and we've taken a quiet farm area and turned it into a big industrial complex. And then the people around it that probably could, would rather not look at that every day or fight that traffic and that type of thing. So, great, they wanna, they wanna sell and, you know, live the American dream and we've, we've handcuffed them. So, we ought to really look at creative ways that they can sell their property and bring in industry that we can tax and help fix the roads and put in super duper fancy bike lanes.
Right.
You know.
Cause I think the plan with Samsung was to bring them in, give them tax cuts so that we could then have taxes on all of the other companies that are gonna move in.
And there's gonna be-
That's a very oversimplification of-
There's gonna be a bunch because when you look at suppliers to a major corporation like Samsung, there may be five or six tiers of suppliers. And so, when I managed, uh, contract manufacturing, we were like a Tier Three to Applied Materials. Applied Materials is a Tier One to Samsung. So, the semiconductor equipment that Samsung uses was manufactured by companies like Applied Materials or Tokyo Electron.
Right.
And then they would have suppliers that would build the individual pieces for them to put equipment together. So, that, I was like a Tier Three supplier for quite a few years and, uh, paid a lot of taxes in those companies. And, uh, that brings up another thing. Since starting work, uh, outside of the military in nineteen eighty, I have been involved in the budget process, uh, through manufacturing. It's, it's a little different, but the concepts are the same. And in manufacturing, most times budgeting, the budget process is twice a year. So, I got a double dose of what the city does annually. Now, they'll do a, they'll do a major budget and then they'll review it periodically and make changes. But, uh, essentially, it's the same thing. And that is something I could hit the ground running. Uh, I know one of my opponents has done it for six years on the city. I'm not sure what his background is in manufacturing or whatever, but he, you know, he's, uh, I'm sure he's got an awareness of the budget process and that type of thing, but, but I would be able to hit the ground moving. Cause once, once you're elected in May, the budget process seems to start really quick. So, I'd be able to work well with that.
Got it. The next thing I wanted to ask you about was what levels of community involvement you've done? And I know you've kinda touched on that already in this interview and also your shirt touches on that. So, what can you tell us about that?
So, that's one thing, uh, I guess you can, people will tell you that they see me at city council all the time. I like to, to monitor it. Uh, I haven't served on any boards. My wife, uh, served on, uh, the Parks and Rec Board. I haven't, uh, you know, I kinda wish I had did some, uh, stuff on the P and Z. That seems pretty interesting. See, you get to see all the new projects, but, uh, I've done some things with, uh, Taylor ISD, currently working on a, uh, continuous improvement team with Posment Elementary. I like stuff like that. I had a good relationship with the superintendent at Pataville and he and I would meet, uh, tried to meet monthly. Sometimes it was bimonthly. We'd have lunch and discuss issues. Uh, when he was doing the bond initiative, I helped a little bit with that, uh, that type of thing.
Okay, awesome.
I'm a, I'm limited in my job as a federal employee. People constantly trying to get me to say whether I'm a Republican or Democrat.
Right.
I don't think it has any place in local government. Actually, three years ago, I considered running for place two and I, my leadership team at the time had told me that I couldn't because of, uh, we can't, we weren't supposed to be involved in politics. This time, I went to the legal office with FEMA and they said, "Yes, you can, you're, you're allowed to do any school board, city council type stuff as, anything that, where you don't have to declare a party." And it's the Hatch Act, if you wanted to look it up later.
I think I saw you saying on Facebook at one point.
So, that's what it is.
Okay.
And I think anybody that knows politics and knows government, if you tell them you're an ultra-conservative, they oughta really, they oughta be able to piece together how you're gonna vote the next election.
Right, right.
So, I can say that much, but I can't really campaign for any- I can't declare or campaign for any candidates. I was actually, uh, the Eastern Williamson County Republican Party asked me, told me that when they heard that I was gonna run, told me that I could actually go to one of their meetings and announce it. I, I appreciate it, uh-
It's a little too close to declaring.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tie myself to a party. Because at the city level, in the school level, it doesn't really matter. You know, everybody is, should be working for the betterment of Taylor and the betterment of our children and the classrooms and those type of things. So, we shouldn't care whether you're one or the other. So, you know, we've gotta, and I think allowing party politics into our local, uh, local stuff has ca- helped to cause a little bit of a division. You know, if you've got one party backing candidates and another party backing theirs and, you know, that's a divided process.
Right.
It shouldn't be that way in local government. So, that's why, if even if it wasn't a law that I had to adhere to, I would try to maintain that and not, I didn't accept any campaign donations. I've had several want to donate. I, I don't wanna owe anybody, but the citizens of Taylor. That's, that, if they elect me, I wanna, I wanna work for them.
Well, that is a little bit harder of a route to take if you don't have that endorsement. I know we had a candidate in the, uh, general election who went that route. Um, I also saw on Facebook speaking on that, you're self-funding yourself, right?
Yep, and-
For that same reason, I guess, to not owe anyone.
Not owe anyone and, uh, I'm, I took, I signed the, uh, I'm, now it's drawing a blank, but when you sign up to run, you can pick, everyone has to select a campaign treasure, which I did. And then you can sign another form that says you won't spend over a thousand and sixty dollars. So, I signed that form too. And, uh, I'm already at seven hundred, so I don't, you know, I've gotta save a little money to have, uh, to have a party at the end or hopefully.
I imagine most of that goes towards signage.
Signs has, was right at six hundred bucks so far.
Six hundred bucks, okay. And then the rest, I guess you're doing kinda social media marketing?
Yeah, that's the only marketing I'm doing that and people like you, they're kind enough to give us these interviews and like I mentioned to you, there's someone in Hutto that has reached out. Sometimes the paper gets, does an interview.
Or something, I think they did that last time.
I think it's, uh, the Chamber of Commerce does the candidates for them.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's what this is for, to give people a platform to, uh, you know, the town of Taylor.
Yeah, it's a good thing you do and I appreciate it. The point I just wanted to get across is, uh, that we have a big problem to fix that's self-induced. We have a division in the community that, we need to fix that because the other things that are in front of us are too difficult to do with a divided, divided populace. So, we need to fix, we need to,
You need to get on-
We need to mend it and get back on track and start worrying about stuff that matters and working on the things that the people want, not what a party wants or what a, a liberal wants or a conservative wants. We need to listen to what the people want and do what they want to do, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a good message going forward. On the lighter side of things, what is, so you grew up in Georgetown, but you've been in Taylor for a long time. What is your favorite thing about Taylor?
My favorite thing about Taylor is in the summertime, every weekend, there's something fun to go do, like barbecue wise or cook-offs and those type of things. And when people are in those situations, Taylor's an awesome place. You know, when you go downtown to something and everybody's hugging and shaking hands and Taylor is a beautiful place to live. You step out of that and start talking about Samsung or go to a city council meeting and they're fighting each other, then Taylor, you see a different side of Taylor that's not so pretty. Small towns, even ones that are growing like us, we can't lose that hometown feel or it's, you know, you're already seeing it at sports events. My wife and I really followed the baseball team last year and it was good to see the crowds and people.
Yeah.
But you see that even dropping off because everybody's so busy going there, doing their stuff. And then you throw the division in there and it just compounds up. So, we gotta work on that.
I think, I think you're right.
And people that, people that have known me a long time will say, "Where's this Terry been?" And I'm telling you, doing that petition drive and talking to that many people and with the same story and I'd go home and, uh, we'd, every evening, we'd set up somewhere to get signatures and listen to the stories. I'd have to decompress. It was, uh, it was pretty tough. And then when, it only lasted twenty-one days and we collected well over the number of signatures we needed. But then for that next couple of weeks, not going and talking to the people, you feel kinda empty. You know, cause I wish it was something you could do every day, maybe, maybe over other day, cause it got pretty tiring.
Right.
And we were having record heat, which didn't help. So-
Oh, yeah, I know what you mean.
So, but that, that was an awesome thing to participate in.
Yeah. So, touching on that, that kinda last thing, I'm glad you brought it back up. What was that petition for?
That petition that we put in place is a referendum to take the salary increase that the council voted for themselves and roll it back to, it just does away with the ordinance and brings them back to the twenty-five dollars a week as if there wasn't one. That, a month later, they could call another meeting and give themselves another one and we'd have to do that all over again. But what I think it did, and I'm hoping, is it showed them what the people really thought. And, and most everybody I talked to agreed that if they would've just gone with what- Agreed that if they would have just gone with what the compensation committee had come up with, which was a pretty good raise. Nothing would, nobody would have had a petition, you know.
Right.
And I even, I even told them after the petition was successful, hey, y'all just pull it back. Yourself and adopt what the other and I'll just quit. I'll just, I'll just let it die, you know, but they didn't, they didn't wanna do part of that. I'm not sure if you legally could after all those people had signed. I, I don't know if they had to go through with it. But the motivation for it wasn't to. It wasn't so much about the money, it was about doing something flying in the face of what the citizens want. And then when you made a committee. To come up with a number. You know, and the number was more than most of the citizens would have liked, but they were willing to live with it. They, you know, that's what the committee came up with. And then just fly in the face of that. One of the council members called out Mr. Orta that uh, you know, it came to present what they'd come up with. Call him out, uh, question him. It's pretty bad and uh. Mr. Orta and I could be, couldn't be any further.
Right.
Away from each other politically.
Right.
But I felt bad for him. That any citizen volunteering for the city and doing, uh, you know, spending their time to do that. Doesn't deserve to be treated like he was. And then uh, Stacy Stork came up and uh.
Right.
Shortly thereafter and, and gave them a peace of mind and. You know, even though she was probably out of line, probably shouldn't have done it, the, the mayor had no business talking to her like that, so. Those kinda things are what the people saw and what made of it motivated them to wanna be part of the petition. And. It was, it was pretty awesome feeling to uh, do that even. Most of the council members, after we presented the night that we had the n- numbers and we gave it to the. City clerk, the three council members that you wouldn't expect. Are the ones that came up and congratulated me. Riddell, you know, Robert Garcia did it publicly on Facebook. Gerald Anderson came up. And uh, thanked, you know, said that was a good thing. The other two that voted against the salary increase. They didn't have a word to say to anybody, anybody on our team, so that, that was a surprising thing for me. The three I would have thought would have never spoke to me again, came up and congratulated me, so.
Right.
Local politics is interesting.
Oh, it's a, it's a different beast, you know, and I, I think it's a, I always tell everyone I interview who's running for it, I say, you're a brave person.
Oh yeah, it's a, I'm getting to uh, enjoy. Or experience the full political process.
I think experience is a better word than enjoy, right? Well, awesome.
Someone told me one time, and I think uh, Ariola said it last week, you gotta have thick skin. You gotta have armor plated skin and some days.
It's a, it's different and I think another thing.
I don't think people need to be so mean.
Well, I, I think it takes away from good candidates that could run because me. I've had people ask if I would run, but I don't think I would ever run for city council as a local business owner. Because you've seen what people can do to someone's business.
My thought process on it, you know, normally it would be discouraging and, and bother me. But I've kinda turned that around and I've looked at what happens on a national level and a state level. And the only ones that they mess with and, and throw those kinda things at. Are the ones that they see as a threat. So the more they get on me and, and dedicate all their efforts on destroying me. That tells me that they see me as a threat and they're not spending the time they need to on their own platform, so. So it has, you just got, I've been, I've been in combat. I've been, I've managed co- corporations. This, this stress is not anything, so.
Right.
It's nothing, I was a firefighter. Uh, for uh, Taylor volunteers and Copeland volunteers. Running for city council, you know, it's stressful, but it's nothing like entering a burning house or. Or jumping out of an airplane or fighting the enemy or not, it's nothing, so. Bring it on, it's all fun.
Yeah, awesome. I think that's a, that's a good attitude to have towards it. And uh, I tell everyone who's running for city council or on city council. Thank you as a citizen for trying to uh, you know, help our town out and uh, volunteer your time to uh.
One thing about that, you bring up a good point. I've said in this, I've said in the audience, I've gotten on social media. I've been critical of the city government and there's always someone every time I said something. If you're so smart, why don't you run? So I'm running.
Yeah.
And willing to donate my time and energies towards making Taylor better. And if I don't win, I tried and I've done that part. And then when I go back to sitting in the stands and being critical on social media and so I says that, oh, I did.
Yeah.
And I wasn't selected, so. Next question.
There we go.
But uh, I would love to be on council. I'd love to utilize my experience, uh, my education. To try to help Taylor.
Awesome.
Cause it's a, we got a lot of, we got a monumental task ahead of us.
Right, right.
And I think it's whoever we choose for any of the seats. I think it needs to be somebody that can hit the ground running because we don't really have any time to train up and. You know, a lot of times when someone runs for a political position. And the term is three or four years, sometimes it takes almost the whole three years to be, to be ready to be a good council person.
Right.
Most of the duties of council, I can, with a few classes from Texas Municipal League and. And talking to the city staff, I could be ready to go quick, so.
Awesome.
That's one of the pluses.
Yeah, for sure. Well, again, this was Terry Burris, city council, running for city council, district number two. When's the election date?
May fourth.
And early voting is.
I think it's like two weeks ahead of that. I, I have the numbers written down, but uh, really, really need your vote and uh. I'll work hard for Taylor and I will listen to each one of you and I'm, I'm researching now. A method of uh, interacting with the community in uh, District Two. So I'm looking at the platforms out there that I might could use to uh. Whether it's group chatting or group texting or whatever, I've gotta see what's out there, so. I want to uh, know what the people want before I do, well, I vote on major things. I know a lot of the day-to-day stuff that the council does, the community will just let you do. They'll, you know, they'll entrust you with that, but the big issues like bike lanes on Mallard and those type of things. The community needs to be involved. I know they were given opportunities when the envision uh. Workshops and stuff. A lot of those workshops were when people worked, you know, they weren't well publicized. Uh, there's gotta be another way to get the pulse of the community, so I'm doing, I'm researching on methods of being able to do that if elected.
Awesome. I, I look forward to the election date and good luck.
Thank you, sir. Thanks again.
Thank you for coming on.